All right, we're good? Okay, I'd like to call the order. The Town of East Troy Planning Commission for the month of May. I'd like the record to show that all the commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Smith, who's been excused, and Commissioner Sealy, who has been replaced by Commissioner Dynick. How we operate is on a split-meeting format. Tonight is our informational meeting where we will gather information up. What we'll do is we'll have the presenter come up, present to us what they're looking for. We'll have a short discussion between the board and the presenter. At that time, the presenter would sit down, we'd have a small discussion. I'd open it up to the audience if anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor of the proposal, and then if anybody would like to speak against the proposal, and if necessary, a short rebuttal from the applicant. After we gather all our information, we come back in two weeks to make our decision. Now that being said, that is not by ordinance, so if it is a straightforward decision that we feel we can make tonight, we will make it tonight. First item on the agenda is to review the Plan Commission minutes from April 5th.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the discussion on the possible motion to approve meeting minutes using a resolution format to communicate Plan Commission recommendations to the town board. Jen, do you want to just kind of give a synopsis of what we talked about?
So every month after our meeting, I submit this resolution, or after the town board meets, we submit this resolution to the county directly after, so we're not needing permits, we don't have to add that extra time for the applicant. So the goal would be to have a resolution similar to this going directly from us to the town board to kind of supplement having to wait that period of time and solve the problem we discussed last month. So if it's approved, I can make one of these for each applicant each month, whether approved or denied, and then that would convey our message to the town board more clearly.
Any concerns or discussion?
I did speak to the Wisconsin Town Association about the subject, and they said, definitely keep the information flowing, you don't need approved minutes in order to take action, and the solution that our, the planning secretary, planning commission secretary's come up with is most satisfactory to the attorney that I spoke to.
Okay. I agree, I think that solves our problems. I guess I'm not totally sure, but I think we'll, maybe we take a motion and we vote on changing our procedure.
So moved.
We have a, go ahead, a motion to accept the change in...
A second.
We have a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a conditional use request at W-1184 County Road L, P E T John Hudick, Maria, sorry, I'm gonna butcher it. If you guys want to just come up and let us know what you're looking for.
I'm Bill Blair, I'm representing John and Maria, Lena as we know her, but we're proposing to get a conditional use permit to allow them to live in the house that's currently on the property while we build their new house for them, and then once we're completed with that new house, our contract is to then demolish the existing house and to make all the connections on sewer, electric, and gas to the new house if they can move into that.
That's pretty much that simple. I don't know if there's any questions of the applicant?
I just have one, is there a timeframe for demolishing the second house after the first is built?
In order for us to get them moved into the new house, we're gonna have to like make all the disconnections on the existing house and move them over, and our plan is to immediately then demolish that. So it'd be within weeks now. Where they're at during that couple-week process, I don't know if we've quite worked out, but yeah. So we probably won't have occupancy before we, you know, while it happens, so at some point they'll have to...
There'd be a very short...
They'll be displaced for a couple weeks.
Right.
I wasn't clear exactly where the new residence will be in relation to the existing...
Sure. So do you have the survey? So the, the, as you go up and drive into the fork to the right, the proposed house is the lawn thing there, and the existing house is just about 20 feet west of that. So that's the...
Oh, so it says existing, that's the old...
Yeah, it says existing, that's actually an existing house.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I'm familiar with the old house.
Yeah, which is sort of falling apart by itself, so...
Diversion shouldn't be hard.
It won't be too hard.
I just...
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thanks. Discussion, I'm familiar with the family, and I think they're a good community member. I can't see them trying to pull a fast one and have two houses on our one zone, or whatever the zoning is. But that's just my, my two cents worth. Any other discussion amongst commissioners?
Amongst us, I would just go to the commissioners that they're clearly building within the building envelope, they've observed the setbacks that are necessary for their new structure.
Sure.
I move that we accept this...
Let me just open it up to the audience. Would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of their proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? Okay, now...
As the chairman, we should note that they do have a letter of support.
My apologies, it's sitting right in front of me, and there is, thank you, Bill. My apologies on that. Yes, there is a letter of support from a neighbor as well, and nobody here has got their pitchfork or torches out.
Nope.
We should say that we are also USDA...
Yeah, it's just maybe for, the reason we need to stay on our promises for food security for our business.
Sure, sure, understood. All right, I would take a motion, Jerry.
Okay, I move that we accept the...
Conditional use.
What am I saying?
Conditional use.
The conditional use of parcel number P E T 150005B.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a conditional use request at W-1759 South Shore Drive, parcel P E, P A 322300001, Beulah Q P R T Family Trust.
Hi there, I'm Matt Hager. Basically, we need to replace some stairs that are going down to a pier at our lakefront. They're pitting, they're cracking, and they're sinking. And in the process of looking at this stairwell, some things came to our attention. The stairwell is actually a fourth to a third on our neighbor's property, which is William Hudson. He does have a letter of support in there, I have a letter of support in there from him. Boats that are parked on the south side of that pier, which is right on the lot line, are, would be in his waterway, and the pier and stairs on the property line could cause an issue later on if one of us had to sell our piece of property. So all I'm asking is to move an existing pier, or existing pier and stairwell, about 12 to 15 feet to the north, so it goes away from the property line. I'd like to do it less than that, except that there's a great birch, a bunch of birch trees right there, where I'd like to put it, so I don't want to bother them, so that's why I want to move it about 12 to 15 feet to the north.
Any questions for the applicant?
I, just to clear up some confusion, is there a second pier?
There is.
Is there a walkway associated with that?
There is, there also is a stairway to that pier, and that is the issue, that's the part that's at issue. So to move this, this pier, we've had the two piers from, the pictures I have there, I mean, you see the original pier from like 1907. The other two colored pictures are, I can prove pictorially that they've been there since 1983. The colored pictures, that's me at like age 12, at that second pier. My father believes that the piers have been there since the 70s, and my neighbor, my uncle Bill Hudson, believes that we've had two piers and stairwells for, since the 30s and 40s. So this is, I'm not asking to add anything, in fact, we're taking away some permeable surface away, because the existing stairs are six feet wide, and the ones we want to replace are going to be five feet wide.
I have another question. So according to the shoreline ordinance, I don't know if I should wait for a discussion?
If it's a question more for the applicant, I guess...
No, it's more permitted than ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Have you...
Go ahead.
When I was reading the necessities here, it would be to take out a permit as well as to have an erosion control plan, have all steps been taken?
Yes, I'm working with Benchmark Landscaping, and they have taken, they have taken the, they designed it. We had, I think I have a permit for, before we were going to move the stairs, I have the permit for the erosion control and so on, but now that we want to change it, we were denied by the county at first by, and I talked with, is it Nick Darren, I think is his name?
Chonkey.
Yeah. He told me that was going to happen, and then he told me the next step is to get your approval, and then I'm already on the docket for next Wednesday with the county to get...
What did they deny?
The fact that I'm trying to move, trying to do something with a second stairway. That is the, that is the issue. But the stairway has been there forever, so I mean, certainly longer than I've been around. So again, I'm not trying to add anything if...
So were you initially gonna just rebuild it in place?
Yes, but then these other issues...
But it's on, it's on your neighbor's property.
Right on the property line, you know, part of the stairwell's on his property and so on, so we're, we're trying to think ahead and not have problems come later on.
So when you're taking the old one out and moving, what's, what's gonna happen to that area?
We want it to look exactly like the rest of the waterline, the same slope, we're gonna take as many plantings as we can in the new location and replant them in the old, yeah.
What, sorry, just roughly, what's, what's the grade difference down to the lake? Is it real steep, is it real flat, roughly?
It's, I don't know. It's, it's steep enough that stairs are necessary.
Got it. Good.
Plus, I have an eight-year-old father who needs to get down there, and he likes to use the stairs, which is, which is good.
I did notice that you had decreased by one foot of width, which is conforming with the requirements of shoreline zoning.
I guess I'm just concerned, is this all one property? It looks like it's a family parcel, is that it?
Yes, this is a family parcel, yes.
So with the two stairwells, why not have one stairwell for both families?
For both, there's only one family, so the concern is that it's on my neighbor, like the part of the stairwell's on my neighbor's property, and it is my, technically my property, or the Cooper Trust's property. So taking that existing, it's, it's my existing pier, and three-fourths of the stairwells on my property, and we, again, we're just trying to move it over to, to stop any potential issues in the future.
What issues, what issues might that be? Please...
Well, it is, well, again, because we're, the stairwells on my neighbor's property and mine, there's an issue there. We have to collaborate to do, we are collaborating, he's my uncle, and we were all set to do something, and then we're like, well, wait a second, if someone parks on this side, he goes, yeah, that would be in my waterway. So my pier, someone parks on the south side, it's in front of his, his property, so that's an issue. The fact that we're sharing a stairwell is an issue, and then if one of us has to sell, if my, either my uncle's family or myself has to sell, having that pier right on the lot line could be an issue later on.
Go ahead.
Are the piers the same? I know it's, that's, okay, so there's no square footage change on the piers?
No, we're not gonna do that.
Are there any other solutions to your need for two walkways?
No, I mean, you know, as someone mentioned, you know, we can, I guess we could go down to one pier, but we've always had two piers, and, I mean, that's, that's the crux of it, I'm asking you guys to be able to say, you know what, you had a pier for X amount of years, you've always had it there, you know, you just want to move it 12 to 15 feet, that's what I guess I'm asking you all to approve.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Discussion amongst commissioners, please.
Yeah, well, I have an issue with the fact, I understand he was kind of grandfather due to age, however, based on the new, from 1975, the shoreline ordinance, it clearly states each property is entitled to one stairway on your property. So that, to me, is, is an issue. At that point, in my opinion, you almost have a choice of rebuilding in the same place, no issue. When you move it, it becomes an issue, because then you default to today's standards, which states one staircase. And I'm of the opinion we have a zoning ordinance for good reasons.
Other discussion?
I agree with Commissioner Dynick. It's tricky, because it's one, just moving an existing one, but the fact of moving it makes it a new one, and only one is permitted, not two.
So the only thing I'll say is, we've done, we've given variances before for the trolleys, I guess, or whatever you want to call them?
Trams, yep.
Trams going up and down, and is that a second access to the lake? This probably is, this probably doesn't, is not, it's not the same, because it is truly a second access, but it's a stairway right to a pier. It's a stair that was, stairway was there, it was a pier that was there. Any other? Go ahead.
Well, tell me about that, because I, I've only been on the commission for a year.
So twice before we've, so when, when they went to get building permit for the trolley, it got denied because it's a second point of access. So Walworth County said they can come to us and ask for a variance, excuse me, to have a second point of access. In both cases, we granted it, so...
And we theoretically could grant a variance for this, what he wants to do.
Right. So I guess, part of me says, on the other side of Potter's Lake, they're pretty much flat with the lake, they have infinite access points to their lake, just because there's not have to be a stairway to it. So I'm torn, yes, we have, you know, Tony Warren-Minister for a reason, we don't want five piers on a 50-foot-wide lot, you know?
Well, he's entitled to multiple piers based on his frontage.
On 200 feet, correct.
It's almost like, why don't you take this main stair down and go to the two piers?
Right.
Or put them closer?
Sure.
Possibly.
Sure.
Share one staircase, so I, I'm just afraid of, I live on a lake, and I'm afraid of precedence, and I know what happens up there. And, you know, to me, we have a, we have a zoning ordinance for solid reasons, and if we start deviating, it just opens up a huge can of worms.
Sure.
And it's not that he couldn't continue to use two piers, his whole axis, no one's taken anything away. And I understand his dilemma, because he's on, you know, on a repairian zone of his neighbor. I mean, there's a consideration there to work with your neighbor to say, I need a little space, probably highly unlikely if you're the neighbor, but that's just my, I mean, we're a recommendation, this is gonna have to go to the board of adjustment in the end anyway.
Which has denied this request, if I, if I understood correctly.
Yes, they, which is why he's going through this process, because he can't, he can't move it.
And it's probably because of the reasons that I'm bringing up.
Sure. And this, and this is the only way he could get it approved, is to go through this process. Right.
I do appreciate the fact that it's an improvement.
Yeah.
Thumbs, other solutions? One is to retain your grandfather two walkways and address the repairian rights issue that someday is going to crop up again, and the solution there is to move the lot line, so that your uncle would acquire, would adjust the lot line, so that that existing pier that you want to repair is fixed, because you're entitled to that pier or that walkway, and you can use that walkway if you choose to fix it. So a lot line adjustment is one solution to the problem, and the other solution to the problem is this idea of two piers being serviced by one walkway. I don't know how far these two piers are apart, if that's practical, but it's not practical.
Correct, two ends, two opposite ends.
200 feet apart from each other.
222.
So it'd be a whole new project, a whole new redesign.
Other discussion amongst commissioners?
Can you shrink that one, that is off the lot line?
No, you can't move it, if he moves it...
Shrink it, I mean, it's like six foot now?
I think you have to be 12, I could be wrong, I think you have to be 12.
If you were to make this stairway narrower, would it be out of, on your property?
The pipe is right there, so...
Okay, okay, no, it's not gonna work.
I think you have to be 12 feet off the, I believe.
So you'd have to move it 15 feet or something?
I could be wrong, but I believe it's 12 feet, I could be wrong.
And in voting, because I can't vote in favor of this, it's just the consistency of the board matters to me, the, the variances or the exceptions are not the norm or the rule of the day, so I just, it's, I prefer to try to maintain the integrity of the zoning and shoreline ordinance as written.
Understood. Any other discussion? All right, I would open this up to the audience, would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of their proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? All right, um...
I think we have letters, we have letters of support, and my neighbor, yeah, has one, right?
In the packet.
Yeah, yes.
Well, do we feel like we should vote on this tonight? Is there any other information we can gather? I mean, I guess I, I could go either way.
I could vote.
All right, I would take a motion then.
A motion to deny the conditional use request on West 1759 South Shore Drive in East Troy, Wisconsin, parcel number P A 32230001.
We have a motion to deny, do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor of denying it, I know it's kind of a double negative or whatever, all those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor, opposed to denial, say aye. Motion is denied. Next item on the agenda is a CSM land separation request, N-9033 Army Lake Road, N-9025 Army Lake Road, parcel P A 260400023, and 3-2604. You guys could let us know what you're looking for, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. This, this request is a result of my mother-in-law, who passed away, and I provided, we provided the copy of front page of her last will and testament and section or Article III distribution of my estate, and her wishes are to divide her property to us, Linda and I, Costrits, and Linda or Tom Milkbrath's wife, he recently passed away. And so I highlighted on the map after that, the lots that my mother-in-law had in her will, 1 through 7, they're highlighted in yellow, and that is, that is her request for the land division. Now the Exhibit 3, the map after that, is the current certified survey, survey map that is, that this planning commission and the board approved several years ago, and several names you'll remember, Victor Cranets and Joanne Morgan, Clayton Montez, Joanne Morgan, and they, so this is, Exhibit 3 is the current certified map that is listed in the county. And so we'd be breaking that up to the various lots that my mother-in-law requested or proposed.
But, so, so if you don't mind, so what she was requesting was seven lots, but you're looking for four?
The, right now, we're looking for, I gotta get back to my sheet.
Well, actually, of the seven lots, what, 5 is our home.
Right, that's our home.
And Lot 1 is my brother and his wife Linda's home.
That's, yes, thank you, Linda.
Okay.
So the, the front field that says R1 on Exhibit 3, that would be broken into 3 or 2, and then 3 and 4, that will be, because if we broke it down anymore, that becomes a larger issue with the county, we'd be treated differently, a commercial development.
They would want a subdivision.
Right, and, and so we don't want to go there. And so we want to retain, because the, the, her wishes for 3 and 4, we would keep as one, and, and we would absorb that into our lot 5, and then part of the wetlands in the back. So on the proposed sheet, you can see what we're requesting. So lots 3 and 4 would be part of Lot 1. Our property is in the back of my mother-in-law's home, she was a resident here for about 70 years, her entire life.
So I'm following what, what you're, what you're doing. So my question is, is it all zones C3? I see some R1.
Yeah, some of them are C3, aren't an R1.
And then if there's a wetland, that would be C4.
C4, yeah. And the, the question I have is regarding what they want to change it to, S R 4 and R H 35, those are not...
I've never heard of them.
Those are village of East Troy designations.
Sure.
So is it different terminology?
Sure.
One is, I think S R is a suburban residential, that's what it is.
Correct. Right, that was the surveyor, wouldn't use those terms.
That's what the village calls districts. We don't use that terminology, and also, we definitely want to have that be, you know, corrected, so it's consistent with...
Correct. So that, that's, I guess, my, when I was reviewing this, what I'd like to see is, zoning changes, sure, no problem, we're very cognizant of agricultural zoning, we're not gonna change. Conservancy, understand. I, I don't think you're overreaching, you know, you're not trying to put in a subdivision, you know, you're leaving Lot 3 as six acres with, with the wetlands, Lot 4 is the house, you know, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with this, I just think we need a little bit more information, and I could definitely reach out to either your civil engineer or surveyor, I could reach out with you guys. I just think, what I'd like to do, I mean, we could still continue on with this process, but I don't think we have enough information to make a decision tonight, which is fine, that's how we operate, we operate in a split-meeting format. We've got this. In two weeks when we come back, hopefully we can clarify some of the, some of our questions, but that's, that's at least my take, if there's any other feedback from commissioners.
The only question I have, which I would rely on you, because I tried to find it and I couldn't, it seems like a large parcel, so I'm assuming that the minimum...
It seems like a large parcel, so I'm assuming that the minimum lot size requirements would easily be met as a subdivision?
That depends on the zoning.
Okay.
Depends, if it's R one.
That's my.
If it's R one, yes, and, and I totally, that's what I'm.
So we don't turn it into a substandard lot situation and?
And we def, that's my concern too. I don't want to, I don't want to rezone it substandard.
Yeah.
Right, and, and so I encourage you, maybe call us and, and the surveyor as well, because on my mother-in-law's, the map that I, we provided, which highlights the lots three and four in the front on, on east shore and Army Lake, and we're keeping that as one. And they determined that those lot size, lot sizes would be.
Adequate.
Adequate, yes, yes.
It's the lot number four that just, I wonder about.
Yeah.
And if it's large enough, I'm, I'm guessing this is, this is a very nice certified survey map or replat, so somebody clearly knew what they were doing.
Yes.
Even though they mixed village and town.
Sure.
Qualifications. That one is at forty thousand three hundred and forty square feet.
And if that's owned to R one, that complies.
That does, okay, great.
But again, I, I, I want to know, are we changing C three?
Yeah.
To R one? You know, so.
What are the criteria for doing that?
I'd have to dig into it a little bit further as well, so.
As far as a wetland, that is going to remain untouched.
Correct.
Absolutely, right. We determined even when we built a behind my mother-in-law's house, those wetlands would not be disturbed, yeah. We enjoy looking at it, but that's, that's it.
Does that have to be in Lot One, has to be, that area has to be set aside as C four then?
And that's kind of what the question I want. If we're going to, if we're going to do this rezoning, and there's a wetland delineation, now it's not a sewer pack wetland delineation, it's done by Mayor and, well, whatever, I can't read because I don't have my glasses. But somebody delineated this wetland, so I'm with you a hundred percent on that, Dave. If we're going to do that, let's delineate that C four so that it's not filled in. Right.
That, that would my problem is, that one corner had to be half an inch, point six acres, has to be C four.
Sure, sure, and I, and I totally agree with that, a hundred percent. Yep. And I imagine you're not opposed to it, because again, here it is showing as wetlands, you're not trying to fill it in or bulldoze the cattails.
We enjoy our sandhill cranes coming in.
Sure, sure.
That's our entertainment.
So just a comment. The, the only comment I would have here is, it appears that this is a minor land division covered in our town ordinance and fairly straightforward. My question is, is this considered a replat? And the only reason I ask that is the neighbor notification. There's several letters of support. I'm just wondering if the, something to the effect of, within two hundred feet of the exterior boundaries, have the, do the folks know what you're doing? Have they been informed of the change?
We have to send a three hundred page letter every time we have a planning commission. My son goes out.
So that's a yes?
So there would.
Okay, and then the other question I had, which was in the ordinance, was a question about object, other, objecting agencies that, that included like South, the southeastern Wisconsin region of planning or the county land park conservancy, if they are aware of this. Because, or would they, or will they be, or will they be made aware of it?
I think they will be when, when the CSM gets adjusted.
Great.
Sewer pack, I've never, well, whatever.
It's just listed in the ordinance language.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
I just have one question.
Yep, discussion.
A discussion, so I see that they're redrawing a new CSM, so there will be a final CSM with a new number for that property?
There will. And that, I believe, has to come before us again. Now, thi, this isn't, obviously, we're not going to vote on this tonight. This will be delineated, I think, a little bit better, at least for my liking. But yes, it, it, it's going to have to become a new CSM. With new lot numbers and tax keys and all that, so. Other discussion amongst commissioners?
Well, could I ask one more of the presenters?
Absolutely.
Would this satisfy the wishes of the deceased family member?
Yes, yes, right. And, and Linda's brother, who passed, her, his spouse, Linda, there's a letter of endorsement there as well.
Good, thank you.
And if you want the contact information for Yonki and Yonki.
I, I work with them all the time.
Oh, yeah, okay, so you, very good, yeah.
Yep.
So the, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So the reason we need another CSM is because they mixed up the village and the town?
No, well, like, so what you're getting from us right now is, is just a land separate, well, never mind. This, this might be the CSM approval we could do at the same time. Let me talk with Yonki and Yonki.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's John Stigler you're dealing with, Yonki and Yonki?
Right, yes.
Okay, great. I guess what I'm going to do, just in to keep in format, is if there's no more discussion amongst commissioners, I would open it up to the audience. Would anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of the proposal? Would anybody like to speak against the proposal? Okay, we will reconvene and make a decision on this in two weeks. Is there any other business amongst commissioners? Any other public comment? Then I would take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.